Okay, good afternoon, everybody, and thank you for being here. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Today's date is Tuesday, May the 27th, 2025. Ms. Annika, we establish quorum?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor Nori Gonzalez-Garcia.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Ruben Plata.
Present.
Councilwoman Jessica Ortega.
Present.
Councilwoman Marissa Gerlach.
Present.
Councilman Alberto Vela.
Present.
Mayor, we've established quorum.
Okay, thank you so much. The next item is invocation and pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Heavenly Father, as another school year comes to a close, we offer gratitude for the students, teachers, staff, and families. We ask for a rest renewal over the summer for safety, peace, and joy for all in our community, especially our children and educators. Guide us as leaders to continue building a community that supports and uplifts every learner. Help us remain mindful of our responsibilities, and may our decisions reflect wisdom, compassion, and unity. In your name we pray.
Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item is disclosure of conflicts of interest. Ms. Anna, has anything been filed?
Just Mayor Pro Tem Plata has one on file for executive session item number two relating to Simiron.
Okay, thank you. And we're gonna change our order of our agenda, and we're gonna go to item number 27. Mr. Terrazas?
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor and City Council.
Good afternoon.
I come before you to present item number 27, approval of memorandum of understanding between the City of Mission and Mission Consolidated Independent School District related to the real estate transactions and land donations of the flood mitigation purposes. The city will utilize district properties for flood mitigation purposes. Mission C I S D has identified the following two properties that may assist in the address local flooding. Parcel number one, a tract of district-owned land located at the corner of Francisco Avenue and Citriana. And parcel number two, the athletic field located on Bryan Elementary School, used for instructional, extracurricular, and community purposes. The city agrees to donate to Mission C I S D a tract of land located at the northeast corner of Bryan Road and Elm Drive, which the district intends to develop for overflow parking to support Bryan Elementary School. Mission C I S D agrees to donate to the City of Mission four district-owned landlocked parcels located near the Mission Pump House along Canal Street and Old US 583 for public purposes of the expanding or improving Leo Peña Placita Park. An MOU was approved by Mission C I S D on May 21st, 2025. Staff and city manager recommends approval.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions?
I'm going to approve.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the memorandum of understanding between the City of Mission and our Mission Consolidated Independent School District related to real estate transaction and land donation for flood mitigation purposes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. I'd just like to make a really quick comment on this. This is, this is a huge, huge, huge win for our city. These areas that JP has described have been, have been a long time issue for the City of Mission as far as drainage was concerned, and we really didn't have any other options to mitigate the drainage issues. And so, in talking to the school district, we found common ground. We moved forward for the betterment of both the school district and our city, our students, our residents in those areas. And I'm so pleased and very proud of our school board, their administration, and our, our city council to working together to get this done. I can't tell you how proud I am for this moment, so I would like to take a quick picture of this and memorialize the event. So, we'll go down there, and you know what? Can I have y'all come up and say a little bit as well, too? So, y'all come up. We have, we have three school board members here, and our superintendent for Mission C I S D. And thank you so much for being here.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. We felt this would benefit all of us, and we felt it was important to take care of this so that we could move forward and help our citizens here in Mission in the area of flooding, considering what we've been experiencing. So, as a board, I just want to mention that, yes, everyone was on board with it, and we agreed to do this, so we want to move forward with it.
Thank you.
Oh, just thank you again. Like Coach said, it's a wonderful opportunity to be able to collaborate where it's going to help the whole community, all our children, and all of our parents and grandparents. And so, it's a really wonderful opportunity. Like Coach said, we work together as a team of eight, and now with our city council. I do want to mention our board members, Jerry Samora, Veronica Mendoza, Danny Martinez, and Pedro Ramirez. I mean, we're all so proud of this, and like you said, we worked as a team. So, thank you so much for having us.
Thank you.
Hello, how are y'all? I just wanna, I'm as excited as Nori is. We've lived in the community for such a long time. I know we were poaching on y'all's property, Aaron Bryan, for many, many, many years, you know? And if you would've gone by last week during awards assemblies, you would've seen, again, that there was no parking for our parents. So, I think that this is a win-win for the City of Mission and for the school district. And we look forward to working with y'all, you know? As long as we're here, we look forward to working with y'all. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. I'm Dr. Chris Valdez, Superintendent of Schools. To help build great schools and to help build a great city such as Mission, it takes everybody, right, working together? When I was approached with the project, the expansion of the park, I said, yes, as long as there's pickleball courts. Actually, I did. I love the idea of beautifying Mission, and it would, you know, be a great asset to not only the citizens, but our children, right? To partake in that area. And then, of course, any win-win for both entities is quite important for us, and I look forward to many more collaborative initiatives with the city. I know that Mayor has met and some of the city council have met with district leaders, and so, we, I stamp that. I codify and say, yes, we're in this together, and it's, it's a partnership. It'll always be that way. So, thank you so much for your consideration, and looking forward to many, many more opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, now we'll go down there for a picture. Oh, yeah, that's right. Oh, yeah. Okay, we're gonna resume our agenda, and so, the next item is the, oh, no, we're waiting on kids.
We're waiting on kids.
Yes. So, we're gonna move on to item number two, April Employee of the Month. Ms. Mungia?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Today, we're here to present to you our Employee of the Month for April 2025, which is Ms. Magali Garcia. She's our Library Youth Coordinator, and she was nominated by Ms. Kayla Lopez Librarian. I'd like to ask them to please join me up here, along with Ms. Yanni, their director. Thank you. And the nomination reads as follows. Magali has been working at the Spear Memorial Library for six years, with the last two being the Library Youth Coordinator. Magali has a true passion in ensuring the continued success of our teens division. Since the division's inception, she has played a crucial role in creating an environment where teens feel both engaged and inspired. She designs programs that not only meet the unique needs of the teens she serves, but also spark creativity and foster a sense of fun. Beyond her programming, Magali is an active listener who consistently seeks and values the feedback of her teen patrons. Most recently, the Texas State Library and Archives Commission visited our library to interview staff and showcase our efforts to enhance digital literacy for a documentary focusing on three Rio Grande Valley libraries, with the teens division being their primary focus. As this was their first visit to our library, we were determined to make a lasting impression. Without a doubt, Magali proved to be the ideal person to lead this effort. She thoughtfully organized a teen tech fair that highlighted the diverse range of programs and services our library offers to assist young adults thrive in today's tech-driven world. Magali delivered an outstanding presentation, and when interviewed, her responses were both insightful and passionate, painting a clear picture of the exceptional work happening in our teen division. Thanks to her efforts and deep commitment, the Teen Tech Fair ensured that our library's most outstanding qualities were prominently featured in the documentary. Thank you, Magali, for all you do and for providing exceptional service to our patrons. Congratulations.
Good afternoon. I thank Library Director Yanni and Reference Librarian Kayla for submitting my name as the nominee, and I also thank the City of Mission for selecting me as the Employee of the Month. I am truly, I am truly honored to receive this nomination. Everything I do, from reviewing literature to planning activities and programs, has been done for children who look forward to becoming my teen patrons, the teenagers who visit or have the potential to drop by the library to access our free resources and admire the department dedicated to them, and the adults they may become who might encourage the next generations to visit their local libraries. As someone who was once a child patron of the beautiful Spear Memorial Library, it is a privilege to provide patrons with a safe maker space filled with titles and programs I wish I had the opportunity to experience growing up. This motivation has driven me to grow, mature, and further develop into the professional I am today, devoted to the well-being and lifelong learning of teenagers. Thank you.
Thank you. Very well said. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. What can I say? I'm very lucky, I'm very proud of Ms. Magali and part of our library team, and every day, every month, she really goes beyond what is required for her in the department. She plans the lessons and curriculums and everything with them, with what they want to see, but also they start up with their education and for them to become like non-learning adults and continue within our reference department, hopefully years to come with Ms. Kayla. Thank you.
That's nice. Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, you want to come up here for a picture, please?
Ready? One, two, three. There, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and congratulations, and look forward to all the wonderful things we're gonna do.
Thank you so much.
Okay. The next item is a proclamation for National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Chief Torres?
Hello, Mayor and Council, Chief Torres. Good afternoon. Here with me, we have Ms. Leland and Mr. Chris Jenkinson with the RGV Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America. And I'll be reading the proclamation, and then see if she'd like to say a few words. So, the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas every day, 125 people in the United States are killed by gun violence, and more than 206 are shot and wounded, with an average of more than 19,000 gun homicides every year. And whereas, in Texas, 4,330 gun deaths every year, with a rate of 14.6 deaths per 100,000 people, a crisis that costs the state $51.3 billion each year, of which $1.1 billion is paid by taxpayers. Texas has the 25th highest rate of gun deaths in the U.S., and whereas, support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizen goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from those who are a danger to themselves and/or others. Whereas, mayors, council members, and law enforcement officers, in partnership with local violence intervention activists and resources, know their communities best and the most familiar, and are most familiar with their local criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe. And whereas, gun violence prevention is more important than ever as we see gun violence continue to impact communities across this country. Whereas, in January 2013, Hadia Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at the age of 15, and on June 6, 2025, to recognize the 28th birthday of Hadia Pendleton, born on June 2, 1997, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute to Hadia Pendleton and other victims of gun violence, and the loved, the loved ones of those victims. And whereas, the idea was inspired by a group of Hadia's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose the color orange because hunters wore orange to announce themselves to other hunters went out in the woods. And orange is a color that symbolizes value of human life. And whereas, anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 6, the first Friday in June 20, June 2025, to help raise awareness about gun violence. And whereas, by wearing orange on June 6, 2025, people across the United States will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And now, therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Mission, declare the first Friday in June 6, 2025, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day, proclaimed on this 27th day of May 2025.
Is there a motion?
I think a motion.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the proclamation as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Ms. Leland?
Good afternoon. My name's Leland Hu, and I'm a volunteer with Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America. Mayor Gonzalez-Garcia, Mayor Ruben Plata, and City Council members, we are grateful for this year's Wear Orange proclamation. National Gun Violence Awareness Day is an annual event that takes place on the first Friday in June and marks the beginning of Wear Orange Weekend. Wear Orange is dedicated to honoring the lives of people in America affected by gun violence, elevating advocates across the country who are demanding an end to gun violence by taking action. With yesterday being Memorial Day, we recognize that veteran suicide rates are at a 20-year high, and among our 10 to 12, 24-year-old youth, suicide is the number-two leading cause of death. Firearms are the most common method used in suicide, accounting for 50% of all suicide deaths in Texas. Last Saturday, the 24th of May, was the third anniversary of Robb Elementary School shooting in Yuvalde. How can we forget that 19 innocent children and two dedicated teachers were murdered by an 18-year-old with assault weapon? I'm pleased to inform you that Yuvalde's Strong Act passed in the Texas Legislature last week. The bill would correct problems in training that led to police hesitancy, require officer and school officials to meet annually to develop active shooter response plans, and increase training for school shooter response at campuses. Recently, at home here, we had several scares related to guns at many, at a couple of school districts here in the RGV. There have also been random acts and intentional acts of gun violence across the valley. We all fear, the, we all face the fear of potential gun violence daily. We wear orange to demand the future free from gun violence. This year, Wear Orange, we focus not only on raising awareness, but on the many actionable steps that we can take to protect our families and communities, from parents to community partners, to law enforcement, to elected leaders, to responsible gun owners who securely store their guns to keep our community safe. This effort takes all of us. Today, Wear Orange has the support of many coalition partners, cultural influencers, sports teams, city officials, mayors, law enforcement, faith leaders, public safety officials, survivors, students, teachers, and moms, and other advocates. This year, the community members across the United States will be focusing on some concrete steps that we can take to recommit to a culture of responsibility, safety, and power. Things like securely storing all firearms in homes and cars, and encouraging community members to be smart. That's a campaign we have for safe gun storage. Having conversations about gun safety with friends and neighbors, and building partnerships with local leaders, businesses, and organizations. I have Be Smart and statistical information for those who are interested. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Would y'all please step forward, and we'll get a picture, and we'll hand you the proclamation. Thank you. Yes.
Yes, we'll do them next.
Because, Anna, are they all here? Okay. We can do another proclamation. Okay, the next item is a proclamation for National Building Safety Month.
Mayor, City Council, good evening, good afternoon. Whereas the City of Mission is committed to recognizing that our growth and, growth and strength depends on the safety and essential role our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play, both in everyday life and when disasters strike. And whereas, our confidence in the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry, who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas, Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role our community's largely unknown protectors of public safety, our code officials, who assure us of safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. And whereas, G A M O N, the Team for Building Safety Month 2025, encourages all to get involved and raise awareness about building safety on a personal, local, and global scale. And whereas, each year, in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local, state, federal, building safety, and fire prevention departments in protecting lives and property. Now, therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Mission, hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 as Building Safety Month.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, Mayor.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the proclamation for Building Safety Month as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
I would like to recognize Mr. Vela and Victor and Lino, our chief building official, and my two building inspectors. They do great work every day.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone?
Come on.
They're a little shy. They're a little shy. Okay, that's all right.
They're shy.
I'm renting it to my brother. Ms. Anna, are all the kids here? Not yet. Okay. All right, we're gonna move on to the, our report for the Greater Mission Chamber of Commerce. Ms. Brenda?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and City Manager Mike. So, our report, her monthly report, will highlight a couple of chamber activities, recap and upcoming. All right, so we held a successful annual golf tournament, which is one of our signature events. We had over 120 golfers, and we made, were able to make a donation to Mission CISD in the amount of $5,000. So we want to thank our business community or title sponsors. And next year, we'd like to spread the wealth and include our other public school, Sherilyn ISD. So next year, we really hope to, to raise more funds and be able to spread the wealth. We were also very honored to be a part of the Mayor's Annual Evening of Prayer Event. I want to give a special thanks to the City of Mission, Mission Event Center, and the local ministries for helping us make this event such a successful event. We were able to welcome over 500 residents in the community. We hope to continue growing that program as we move forward. Together with our members, we were able to officially celebrate the accreditation, which is a collaborative effort and milestone for everybody. So we want to thank our, our members that have been with us for, for a very long time and continue to support us, our volunteers. We were also able to recognize and give an honorary lifetime award to Mission Auto Electric Bank of Vassals, in memory of Bank of Vassals, that has been with us for 70 years, member of the chamber. So just to give everybody a highlight, so we are one out of only three chambers in the Rio Grande Valley, which is the four counties that is an accredited Chamber of Commerce, meaning we're aligned with best practices. And on our Discover Mission, which is our destination marketing organization, we were able to support one of our tourism assets, which is the Texas Citrus Fiesta Festival, which is put on every year. Congratulations to the Texas Citrus Fiesta's kings and queens, and all the duchesses for their awesome float. So we're excited to, to showcase it in the year to come, and the years to come. And backed by popular demand, we partnered with SBA, a Small Business Administration, and the Mission EDC to present resources for our small businesses. So we want to thank Mission EDC for allowing us to always use their facilities to showcase the financial resources that we do have in the community. And these are, this is part of our Lunch and Learn Program, so we do invite any of our community partners to come out and educate our members. And it's very important that we thank our volunteers. So we celebrated this last week, giving thanks to our ambassadors, which they're also known as our chamber champions, which are our volunteers. We currently have 15 active in our volunteer program. The program is open to all of our chamber members, and we just want to say thank you to all of our volunteers, because we cannot do what we do in the community without them. And we held new member orientation. We were, it was over 40-plus members. We also gave complimentary headshots to those members that showed up, but we were able to share with them the resources that they have, their membership database, which is a lot of learning to do for our members. And we hope to continue hosting member orientation for our current members every quarter. And in upcoming events, we do have a podcast that we will be rolling out in the 30th. We have a ribbon cutting coming up. We do have a membership mixer. It's gonna be in a new place here in Mission off Griffin. It's called Moon Restaurant and Mixology. So we're really excited. We want to invite the community to come out and support our new, one of our newest places to eat and entertain. So join us if you can. And our two signature events that are coming up is our Buenas Tarde Lunch in August, and then our annual business awards in October. And we just want to welcome, in the month of May, 10 new members. This was also a result from my membership Blitz, which is the boots-on-the-ground recruitment, which we did. So welcome to the team. And in announcements, we are now, tomorrow, we have a board meeting, which will open up Board of Director Position nominations. So we have a total of five seats to be filled. Out of those five seats, three are returning. So, so we'll see how that goes. So we're excited. So anyone interested in being a part of our Board of Directors, please feel free to submit a nomination. And year-round, but we have been pushing our business award nominations. So we do have nominations open now for Business of the Year, Business Leader of the Year, and the Nonprofit of the Year. All of this information is available in our website, but we are pushing it through our local social media channels and through our Chambermaster communication. And that is all we have for, so far, until next time.
Y'all have been very, very busy.
Yes.
And congratulations on your accreditation. That was awesome.
It's our pleasure. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Okay. I guess gonna, I'm gonna ask again, Anna, are all the kids here yet?
They told me that they were gonna have.
I'll let you know. Okay. Okay, all righty. So the next item is the departmental reports. Those were in our packets. Are there any questions or comments on that?
I'd like to make a motion to approve, Mayor.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the departmental reports as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimity, five zero. The next item is citizens' participation. Has anyone signed up, Ms. Anna? Oh, okay. Oh my goodness, Ms. Sydney. She's been patiently waiting. Okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Today, we want to provide a update. As you know, we're transitioning out from our current website. We'll be making the full move on July 10th. We're going to be moving to Civic Plus for our new website. It's much more user-friendly. This way, our citizens are gonna have access. It's much more transparent and a way for everybody to be on the same page. So I wanted to provide some updates. We have sent out emails to all department heads to get their page up and running. The crew and myself have received 10 different updates. So a lot of them are coming in, and we've been following base with all the department heads, and they're working on it to make sure that we are up and running. June 6th is the last day for any corrections. And then, of course, we are launching July 10th for that new website. Now, the majority of the council has received their bios. I will be passing, if I may approach, to Mayor Pro Tem, Mr. Plata, and our Councilwoman Ortega, to give you a copy of your bios. And then we will be taking headshots next Tuesday and Wednesday here in the community room from 8:00 AM to noon. Now, if these times don't work for you, that's fine, we will accommodate. Just let us know, because we do have a lot of lights and headshot backgrounds. So we just want to make sure everyone looks uniformed.
Vacation. Thank you. Okay.
Any questions?
Yes, let's, let's see. Do y'all have any questions for Sydney on the website? No?
I've also emailed everyone a copy. If you want to review the website as well, take a look for it yourselves. And then if you have any questions, you can just let me know.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Sounds like they're all here.
It sounds like they're all here, but we still haven't gotten the...
They told me no, not yet.
Not yet. Okay. Okay, so the next item is our consent agenda. And those are items numbers nine through 19. Is there anything that, any of the council would like to call and discuss separately?
If there's not any, I would like to make a motion to approve items nine, approval of limits, 10, acknowledged, received a minute, 11, approval of resolution, City Council of Mission, repealing resolution number 1840, 12, authorization intervention of AEP Texas, approval of interlocal agreement between our west side. Number 14, authorization to tank first one-year renewal of propane gas. 15, authorization to solicit bid for pump pre-streaming. 16, approval of interlocal agreement with the City of Mission and Mission Consolidated School District. 17, approval in local agreement with Goodbye Cooperative. 18, plan approval, Sherilyn Business Park. Number 19, authorization to lease purchase to 2025 J. McCrory.
Okay. Is there a second? Second. There's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented, with items number 11 having a resolution number 1989, and item number 12, resolution number 1990. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimity. Five zero. Okay. So we're gonna move on to authorizations and approvals. We've already done, we've already done 27, so we're gonna move on to item number 28. And that's Mr. Terrazas. Ms. Anna, what ordinance number would that carry?
Pardon me?
The ordinance number on, on item number 28.
That would be 5650.
5650. Okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I'd like to come before you to present item number 28, approval of ordinance 5650, amending chapter 114-utilities, Article 1, Section 114-21, connection of discharge lines to the city sanitary sewer line by repealing subsection A through G, and by adding new sections A through D. Any improvements on property within 80 feet of sanitary sewer line by way of public right-of-way, public, or private easement must connect any discharge lines to such sanitary sewer lines within 60 calendar days when the improvement first became within the such distance of the sanitary sewer line. No one may have a discharge line connected to a septic tank whenever any discharge line is required to be connected to a sanitary sewer line. If the property owner, occupant fails to connect in a timely manner, the city is authorized to charge the property owner, tenant, for the sewer service. If any health issue complaints arise due to the septic tank overflowing, the property owner, occupant may be subject to a misdemeanor violation or other violation as provided by the law. Staff and City Manager recommends approval.
I'm going to approve.
Second. Okay, there is a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 5650, amending chapter 114, utilities, Article 1, Section 114 through 21. And this would allow a structure after 80 feet to, to not necessarily connect. Is that correct?
Correct. Yes, Mayor.
All righty. So all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimity, five, five zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Next item?
Item number 29, authorization to award bid for mental rehabilitation project to Reno Works LLC in the amount of $228,000 with $10. Accept an open six-bid responses for mental rehabilitation project for the Public Works Department. Staff recommends to award bid number 25-4550507 to Reno Works LLC in the amount of $228,000 with $10, with the lowest responsible bidder meeting all specifications. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
Move for approval?
Second. Second.
There's a motion and a second to authorize.
How many manholes would that be?
15, 15 manholes, Ms. Brenda, throughout the city. And we did the planning house.
Sorry, Mayor.
And also, the budget is coming from CDPG. They had some extra funds to fund these projects. So CDPG is a source of funding for this project.
Any other discussion? Questions? Okay, we'll take the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimity, five zero.
Thank you.
Next item?
Mr. Moneyman.
Coming with money, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. Item number 30 is seeking authorization to accept a grant award from the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department for the Recreational Trails Grant in the amount of $250,000 with a 20% cost share supported by in-kind services. The city will support its required cost share of $50,000 with in-kind services to include labor for the project's trail overlay and vegetation cleaning. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
Are there any questions? There's a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any discussion, questions?
So the $50,000, there's any in-kind?
Yes, sir. And that, that'll be staff doing their, their labor, and we'll, we'll track that and submit that to Parks and Wildlife.
That might lie there.
Okay. There no other discussion or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimity, five zero. Next item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Item number 31 is seeking authorization to accept a grant award from Texas Department of Emergency Management for the FY22 Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Grant Program in the amount of $404,710 with a cost share of 28%. The federal share is $290,143.89, and the city's local share is $114,566.11, which is 28%. The purpose of this program is to provide the support to communities for hazard mitigation activities that promote climate adaption and resilience with respect to the growing hazards associated with climate change. The city will utilize the funding for the engineering and design of the Sunset Natural Land Drainage Project. Staff and City Manager recommending approval.
I'm going to approve.
Second. Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve and accept the, the grant award from Keenum. Any discussion or questions?
Very much needed.
Yes, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimous, the five zero. Next item is approval of budget amendment.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the approval of budget amendment for the General Fire Replacement Fund and the Event Center Fund. The general fund will have a net balance of $2,221,931 of revenue, should be expenditures over revenues. Fire Replacement Fund will be $50,537 expenditures over revenues, and the Event Center Fund, $30,592 net balance on expenditures. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
Are there any questions or discussion? Move for approval? There is a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any other discussion or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimous, the five zero. Okay, the next item is unfinished business. I believe this is a tabled item that needs to...
The applicant has withdrawn his application.
Okay. So we're gonna remove it from the table and then take no action? And that'll take care of it? Okay. So is there a motion to take this off the table?
I'll show move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to remove item number 33 from the, from, as a, from, as a tabled item. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimous, and there will be no action on this item.
City Manager comments.
Yeah. City Manager's comments is next?
Yes. Yeah, teens into the school year social, Thursday, May 28th at 6:00 PM at the Spear Memorial Library. And donuts with a chief will be on the 5th of June at 9:30 AM at the Police Department. Because we all know, police officers break for donuts.
Okay. City Council comments?
Mayor? I would just like to wish my colleague, Mr. Beto Vela, a happy birthday. I would sing, Beto, but you wouldn't like that. And just, we're super close to get out. I know La Jolla, and I don't know, Sherilyn still has school, but this week, so just be careful out there, drive slowly, and I hope everybody enjoys their summer.
No comments?
Yeah, okay, I'm just, yes, I understand. School's almost out for everyone, I think, by next week or La Jolla the following week. So I wish everyone a fantastic summer. And for those that are seniors this year, may they go on on this next chapter of their life with, with much hope and, and pride, so. Thank you.
Just wanted to congratulate all the graduates from the high schools.
Yes, I too would like to extend my congratulations to all graduating kindergarten, sixth grade, high school, colleges, and any other higher learning schools. So congratulations to, to all. I wish them the very, very best and, and, and good luck in their, in their future endeavors. So that's all for me. Are they, are they ready now? Okay, great. Okay, so we are going to move back on our agenda to item number one under Presentations. And these, this is a presentation of our Sherilyn ISD Chess Club. And these, this is a presentation of our Sherland I S D Chess Club. Oh, my goodness, this is a great showing. Look at that.
It's so cute.
So cute. Oh, my goodness. Can they come and come all around to us?
We have some presents for you.
Oh, my goodness, really? That's not usually the way it works. Thank you so much. Oh, my goodness, thank you.
All right, here we go, everybody. Big smiles. One, two, three, one more, one, two, three, one, two, three.
David, smile, you ready? One more. Okay, thank you.
So, we're gonna say a few words just to recognize our incredible students that are here today. We want to proudly recognize the outstanding achievements of our Sherland I S D Chess Team. They recently competed at the prestigious Super Nationals Chess Tournament in Orlando, Florida. It was held this month. The league competition brought together the best students from across the country, and here at Mission, we are so proud that Sherland I S D was able to represent us. Now, as you can see, we have students of all different ages, as young as kinder all the way to seniors that are competing and representing Sherland I S D. Now, many of our teams ranked in the top twenty nationally in their divisions, which is a testament to their strategy, their focus and education. Today with us, we have students, parents and sponsors from Ruben Inojosa Elementary, Harry Shimotsus Elementary, R.D. Martinez Elementary, Sherland North Junior High, B.L. Gray Junior High, Sherland High and Sherland Pioneer High. Now, to all the students, thank you so much for representing Mission with such pride and excellence. We are incredibly proud of you. And in order to go into more detail, we will welcome Mr. Carr, who is in charge of the chess team with Sherland. Mr. Carr?
Good evening, Mayor Gonzalez Garza, council members. My name is Ivan Carr, and I'm the chess coordinator for Sherland I S D. And on behalf of Sherland I S D and its chess program, I would like to express our heartfelt gratitude for the opportunity to be recognized by the city of Mission and its council. Your acknowledgement of our students' dedication and achievements, especially their participation at Super Nationals in Orlando, Florida, means a great deal to our students, families and educators. Your support not only honors their hard work, but also inspires continued academic and extracurricular excellence throughout our community. We are proud to represent the city of Mission on a national stage, and we deeply appreciate your commitment to celebrating educational accomplishments. As mentioned, we had eight campuses and approximately eighty students representing Sherland I S D and the city of Mission at Super Nationals in Orlando, Florida. We did have some teams that placed in the top twenty as teams and as individuals, and we even had a first-place national champ, David Culberson. Of course, of course, all this wouldn't be possible without the support of our superintendent, Dr. Howard, our board of tr- our board of trustees, our coaches and especially our parents. So, thank you once again for your recognition and continued encouragement of our students. And now, I'm gonna hand it over to our wonderful superintendent, Dr. Elaine Howard.
Madam Mayor and trust, uh, council members, thank you for having us tonight. And as you can see, um, we are bringing you a return on your investment. These kids represent our community. They represent the love that you, um, provide for them every day by serving our community. We are so especially proud of our national champion, Mr. Dave Culberson. Um, this is not a shared award. He is the national champion. Um, and so, we're very proud of him, but we are also very proud that we can call Mission home and that we can represent the valley and our community in the way that we have. Thank you for your support. We're honored to be here today.
If any students want to say a few words, maybe your champion? I think this is a great chance.
On, uh, the sixth round, I had, uh, it was like, this is, uh, the biggest moment for me. I had, I think it was about six points, round six, I was undefeated. And the second place had five, so I actually had the luxury to win or draw my last match, and I'd still be national champion.
Well, we are definitely so proud of all of our students. On behalf of the council and the city, we are incredibly proud. I wish, I think we can try to fit everyone in one picture. I think we can try. Yes, I think that's a good idea. We'll just switch you all to the front and then Umberto can go up top. Thank you so much. You guys deserve all of the recognition and more. Congratulations.
Can we let the council members through? There we go. Let's let the council members through. Students, about face, turn around and face your parents. Right where you're at. Hey, we're gonna do the little up round. Little up round. Hey, step back, step back. Step back, everybody back. Just step on a council member right there.
And for all, for all of our parents, if you guys are looking for the photo, we're gonna have the photos up on the City of Mission's Facebook within the hour without the watermark, so you'll feel free to grab the photos. And if you are, you are welcome to go outside to the front to take more photos.
Yes, they were, they're all working on it. I don't know if they got it fixed yet, but they, uh, JP had a crew. It was-
He gave me an intro.
Something wrong with it. It's a crew.
Okay. Well, that was absolutely worth waiting for, let me tell you.
Yeah, it's cute.
Right? Yes, okay. Um, we are now going to move on to item-
Second session?
No, we still need to do the pub- public hearing.
I was ready to watch.
No, not quite, not quite, not quite yet. Uh, so, public hearing, item number twenty, and that's gonna have, uh, ordinance number, which one?
It would be fifty-six fifty-one.
Fifty-six fifty-one, okay. Okay.
Council members, good evening. The first item on the agenda is a, is a conditional use permit for a, a daycare in a residential home. This is at the corner of Norma Drive and Taylor Road at the northwest corner. That's the aerial photograph. There's a house at the very corner that the applicant would like to use it also for a daycare facility. So, in a single-family residential, the floor plan, that's the photo of the house. It's right in the corner. Photos of the interior, the backyard. There's a, in your quarter of ordinances, that's what it talks about in, for daycares in the residential zone, so there's a lot of regulations in place. Uh, you have a staff recommends approval, subject to the conditions. Uh, two property owners spoke in opposition to the daycare. Uh, they had concerns about liability if the kids go to the, to their yards. Uh, there was a lot of discussion from the Planning and Sonning Commission about, uh, traffic, uh, because the property is in the very corner, they're, they're concerned that if the kids get dropped off in the morning at the same time, that you could possibly have, uh, vehicles queuing into Taylor Road causing, uh, potential traffic hazards. So, that's why Planning and Sonny Commission recommended this approval to the conditional use permit request.
Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this request? If you could, please state your name and address for the record.
Por favor, pedirles hablar en español.
Está muy bien.
Muchas gracias. Uh, mi nombre es Neva Parrilla, Messingale, vivo en la Norma Drive, veintiocho cero siete, de Mission. El motivo de mi presencia es porque he solicitado un, una autorización para poder tener en mi casa un cuidado de niños en el hogar. Uh, durante la anterior reunión, eh, se había, bueno, se, a pesar de que el señor Cervantes, que es el encargado de la oficina, había hecho la recomendación de que sí es apropiado tener un centro de cuidados infantiles en mi hogar. Uh, la comisión hizo la observación de que probablemente mi parqueo, mi espacio para parquear sea insuficiente. Um, argumentando que la Taylor Road es una, es una calle muy transitada. Pero yo quiero hacer la aclaración de que mi casa no está en la Taylor Road, sino en la Norma Drive. Y que en todo caso, eh, según sus mismas normativas, la Taylor Road, de hecho, ya tiene, eh, suficiente espacio como para que existan, eh, stops para los buses escolares. Que nunca han causado ningún malestar, ninguna molestia en la zona. Es más, en la vereda de mi casa, al frente de este stop, existe otro, es, bus stop que nunca ha causado malestar alguno. Por lo que el tema del espacio de la Taylor Road, me parece que no, no es, eh, un argumento muy sólido. Aquí tengo una foto de cómo se ve la Taylor Road muy transitada, el, en el momento en el que los niños están llegando de la escuela. Como pueden ver, no existen muchos vehículos porque es una calle bastante amplia de flujo vehicular moderado. También, eh, he consultado con mis vecinos, mis vecinos más cercanos que están al frente de mi casa y que están al lado de mi casa, de mi propiedad, para preguntarles si para ellos sería una molestia el hecho de que yo usara mi driveway para, para que los niños puedan llegar al, a mi casa cuando yo los vaya a cuidar. Pero ellos me dicen que absolutamente no les parece que les va a causar ninguna molestia y han tenido la gentileza de firmar dos cartas, que se las puedo mostrar si ustedes las quieren ver. Sí? Ellos consideran que es muy necesario que tengamos un childcare en esa zona porque no existe un cuidado del hogar de niños más o menos aproximadamente a tres millas de distancia. Entonces, pensando en que hay muchas familias que trabajan por la zona porque es una zona, eh, comercial, residencial, perdón. Eh, hay muchos papás y mamás que deben tener la preocupación constante de llegar a tiempo a sus trabajos y tener que dejar a sus niños en centros de cuidado infantil que están muy lejos y que no son lo suficientemente personalizados como para cuidar a niños pequeños. Los centros de cuidado infantil tienen arriba de cincuenta niños. Un hogar de cuidado infantil tiene la capacidad de seis niños en la mañana y seis niños en la tarde únicamente cuando es que te otorgan la posibilidad de cuidar a doce niños. Pero puede ser ocho o pueden ser seis únicamente. Entonces, la pregunta es, ¿cuántos carros se necesita para dejar a seis niños en un centro de cuidado del hogar? Probablemente uno o dos porque los niños van generalmente entre hermanitos, con primitos, y con dos carros ya estaríamos, uh, con el cupo lleno. Porque usualmente los hijos únicos se quedan al cuidado de la familia, pero los niños, los hermanitos que son más de dos o tres, ellos sí son los que requieren de este cuidado del infantil en el hogar. También, he estado dando vueltas por el área y he podido ver que existe un childcare que actualmente está funcionando. Este es el childcare y este es el espacio del parqueo del childcare. Es un espacio más pequeño que el mío y está funcionando perfectamente. Entonces, creo que el argumento que se ha planteado no es bastante sólido como para evitar que se pueda ofrecer este servicio, porque yo quiero mencionar que esto, señores, para mí no solamente es un trabajo, es una manera de servicio. Porque cuando yo he necesitado quien cuide a mis hijos, yo estaba muy feliz de haber encontrado una casa donde poder dejar a mis hijos al cuidado de una persona responsable, que esté capacitada, que los cuide con especial amor, con atención. Era lo que a mí me daba tranquilidad y obviamente aumentaba mi productividad. Entonces, esto, este proyecto es un proyecto que nos beneficia a todos como zona y como sociedad, diría yo. Porque justamente hemos tenido que lamentar el día de ayer una noticia de que en el cuidado infantil de una casa no registrada, es decir clandestina, diría yo, ha ocurrido un incidente muy lamentable. Yo quiero evitar que existan estos lugares. Yo quiero tener la capacidad de que ustedes puedan revisar mi domicilio como lo ha hecho el señor Cervantes y el CCR pueda ir constantemente a hacer sus inspecciones y los niños y yo estemos tranquilos. Esto es lo que podría decirles. Este es el tamaño de mi parqueo, he sacado una foto también, para que tengan una idea más cabal de cuál es el área que yo estoy proponiendo como driveway para la llegada de los niños, que no demora más de dos minutos, en dejarlos, firmar la asistencia y los padres retirarse, obviamente apurados a su trabajo. Mi horario de apertura es a las siete y media de la mañana, entonces tampoco es un horario que esté muy, todavía muy copado como para ocasionar un embotellamiento. Es todo lo que tendría que decirles.
Gracias, gracias. Is there anyone else? Le voy a pedir, porque tengo que pedir a ver si hay otras personas que quieren hablar durante este request. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this request?
Uh, yes.
Is there anyone online, Ms. Anna?
Uh, yes ma'am.
Okay.
Um, hi, my name's Melinda Youngblood.
Yes ma'am, can you hear us?
I am her neighbor on the back side, so our backyards are together. I had a, I did go to the meeting for the zoning, because I did have...
Excuse me ma'am, can we please have your name and address for the record?
Yes, Melinda Youngblood, 2806 Nicole Drive.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, and I, we share backyard.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, you muted yourself.
And...
Ms. Youngblood, I'm sorry, you keep on muting yourself. I'm asking her to unmute, but...
Yes, can you hear me?
Now we can, yes ma'am.
Okay, sorry, it's because I couldn't get my phone back. My several concerns that I had was mainly because my backyard, I do have a pool, and I was just saying concerns of, I mean, children could cross my fence, but she said, and if, she said she wanted like 12 kids there, so I was just concerned with if there was an accident in my pool. And another one I had concern was Taylor Road, because they're not done, they're gonna widen our road and they're gonna widen, they're gonna take some of our yard, hers and mine for the corners. So it's gonna become even closer. And right now, they already go 50, 55, so I don't know how fast it's gonna go. And during school hours in the mornings, it's very hard sometimes to get out of there. So, that was a big concern in traffic and being so close to Taylor Road and the house being so close.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am? Anybody else online?
Yes, I'm online. My name is Gracie Lena, and I'm also one of the neighbors who also attended the Planning and Zoning Board meeting and was in opposition for the same concerns that were voiced at the zoning commission meeting. The zoning board denied it for a reason, that being that there is an excess amount of traffic, people speed through Taylor Road as it is when it's not a very wide road. And as a widening occurs, this will, this traffic is only going to get worse. This is a street, her house is on the corner, there is not sufficient, people drive, people don't use their driveways or their garages, they use their driveways and the streets to park their cars. There's not sufficient room to accommodate the amount of traffic that is going to be, cause to increase because of a daycare facility, as all the parents, there's nowhere for them to park. They're limited to using their driveway and they're, and they already have not sufficient parking for even the workers at a daycare. Not to mention the other concerns that a child could very easily get into the street and get run over, their safety concerns. There are also concerns about the covenants of the neighborhood specifically limit and prohibit any kind of business, including a residential daycare. For the same reasons that the Planning and Zoning Board voted against this, we're asking the city council to also vote against this.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else, Ms. Anna?
Uh, no ma'am.
No, okay. I'll give you another, like, 30 seconds, because we actually went over the three minutes, but that's okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Justamente los argumentos que han planteado estas personas que no están dentro del área de, que permite hacer observaciones porque sobrepasan los 200 pies, que dice de la normativa de los que pueden participar para oponerse. Porque una señora, la segunda señora creo que vive en la McCall y la primera vive, no, McCall, y la primera vive en la Nicole, que es una paralela. Ya se le ha explicado en la primera reunión a la señora que los niños no tienen la capacidad de traspasar un muro que está diseñado para evitar que traspase un adulto, que ellos van a estar bajo supervisión y que el CCR me va a pedir a mis regulaciones suficientes como para que yo brinde seguridad y garantía de que los niños van a estar bien. Aún si la piscina estuviera en mi casa, el CCR me permitiría tener el cuidado infantil, pero exigiéndome que yo tenga algunas normas, cumpla con algunas normas de seguridad. La piscina no está en mi casa, está en la casa de la vecina y los niños no van a traspasar la barda jamás, cosa que ella sí ha hecho en una ocasión en mi propiedad y ella tiene cierta antipatía conmigo, porque cuando ella lo hizo sin mi autorización...
Sí tiene otra cosa nueva que decirnos, porque ya terminó el tiempo otra vez.
Aclarar que la señora tiene cierta fijación conmigo porque tiene una orden de alejamiento en su contra favor mío, que le puso la policía, que ella misma llamó cuando yo le dije que por favor salga de mi propiedad, porque yo no tenía autorización.
Eso no tiene, ahorita no.
Tal vez no es muy relevante, pero creo que son sus motivos, porque no hay otra, la piscina es un pretexto, nada más.
Okay, gracias, gracias. I'm gonna allow you to... Do you have anything else to add that's kind of different?
Steve Massey, her husband.
Yes.
Obviously, they live at the same house.
Yes.
Yeah, we have a six-foot fence between us and the neighbor that really doesn't like us. It's a six-foot privacy fence, it's made out of cedar panels. There's no friggin' way that the, I'm sorry, that children are gonna be able, two, three, and four-year-olds, you know, are gonna be able to climb up that fence since it's all, all smooth on our side. There's no way. Not only that, but they won't be outside without supervision. And our yard is plenty big enough that they can play plenty all over the place and not even get close to the fence.
Okay.
As far as the driveway's concerned, we actually had thought of putting in a half-circle to kind of improve our own, for our own selves, parking, et cetera. And so, that's, that's one of the things that we've been talking about and, oh, you know, that's a good idea, maybe we can do that. And so, we went around and looking and actually found one on, on, yeah, the street behind us, I can't remember the name off the rep, yeah, this one. So, this, this is actually on the opposite corner, behind us.
Uh huh, yes.
On, on Nicole Drive.
Nicole, that's just north of you.
I saw that, I was like, oh, you know, we could do that to improve our own park. Okay, so, it was like, that would be an option also for us to be able to improve our own parking, our own parking spaces, which actually we, like we've been talking about for a little while. And so, this is also in one of our plans as far as making things a lot better, a lot safer, a lot easier for everybody. But, at the times that we're looking at opening and closing, well, my wife's looking at opening and closing, is 7:30 in the morning, 5:30 at night. We have video showing that there's almost no traffic on Taylor Road at 5:30. And at 7:30, I come home after working at night, I'm home between 7:15 and 7:30, and there's absolutely nobody on the road. One day out of 10, I may have to wait for one or two cars to go by so I can turn it, turn into our street to park. So, the, the traffic thing, unless the wood, road widening is planned for like within the next six months or so, it's not gonna affect us.
Okay.
So.
All righty, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? And there isn't anyone online, right?
No ma'am.
Okay.
May I like to make a motion, but before I do, I have a couple of questions to our director.
Yes.
I don't know, you, you have stuff here. Do you know how many businesses, there's daycares at their homes right now currently in the city?
I do not know that, but it's not, it's not that many.
But they're in neighborhoods like this?
Yes, there are a few that are operating with a conditional use permit.
And I guess...
Could I make the motion with, for them adding what the gentleman suggested as far as the, the way he wants to do the...
Circle drive.
The circle drive? Or no?
You could.
You can add that as a condition.
You can add it as a condition. My concern is the expansion of Taylor Road. JP, when, when is that about, when is that gonna, that project gonna be let? September of this year? Okay. How long will it take to have that complete?
Twenty-four months.
Twenty-four months?
Yes.
Okay. So, that, that's a concern, because that, that street will be widened and you're gonna have construction vehicles and other, well, you know, having to do with the widening. So that would be a concern of mine. Anybody else have a question or comment?
I have that same concern, because there will be a lot of big machinery, big trucks, just the expansion from that.
I just feel that, I'm sorry ma'am, I just feel that with having something like this in neighborhood, it's kind of, I mean, somebody from another side of town is not gonna come to her daycare, it's only gonna be the surrounding area, I feel. And so, it's close neighborhood, and if she's only gonna have eight to 12, probably less than that.
Would we be able to limit the number of kids too?
Yes, you can add conditions, right? You can make, approve it for six months, you can add the condition about the additional parking area. So there's, there's options if the desire is to, is to give them a shot.
I would like to approve it for six months and then I'll get it right to where it's gonna be the starting of the construction.
Okay.
To see what it's like.
With the, with the circle drive?
With a circle drive and limitation of kids, of stu, of children.
To be how many?
No more than 10?
Okay.
Council members.
Okay, so the motion is to approve all the state dictates. We can't, oh, we can't over...
But the, but the, their actual like childcare license and they want to dictate the number of children they can have and probably even the ages, it's actually the state. So I don't feel like we can set that condition.
Yes, my understanding that the cities can't be more strict, right, restrictive.
In addition, I would like to point out that I believe that there is another entrance off Taylor Road of Sherry that could be used to access this area. I know you noticed the concern about Taylor Road, but there is an alternative route, so something is just...
Can we see that on the map?
Council members, may I bring up a point? This is Christopher Ansaldua, who I live in the neighborhood as well, if you don't mind, just real quick. That be okay? Hello?
Yes, absolutely.
The amount of traffic is not the same, so everything is like...
Correct.
Mayor, I had a, Christopher Ansaldua, who raised his hand, and he's sending a declaration of covenants, conditions, and restrictions for Woodcrest Estate subdivision, and he sent a deed.
Okay, yeah, and then that's information that's good to have, but we, as a city, cannot enforce...
I don't know if he wants to speak, he has his mic.
Deed restrictions.
Yes, I just wanted to call your attention to the deed restriction, because...
Can we ask him if he wants to speak?
Mr. Ansaldua, did you wanna comment on this particular item?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Mr. Ansaldua, I'm sorry, I cannot hear you.
So, while we're waiting on him, did you finish your comment?
Yes, I, I, you know, even with the shared road access, then we'll still be going through the, yeah, I have concerns with the safety.
With the safety on that, as far as the traffic's concerned?
The traffic, yes.
No, I'm was okay with, I could have seconded just his motion.
Okay.
Okay.
So I would have to amend my motion for six months, approval for six months with a condition that they fix their front driveway. And I can't limit how many kids they have, because that's what the states requires, and so I acknowledge that.
Okay. So, that's the motion to approve the conditional use permit, subject to the installation of a circle drive?
Oh, the first one.
And for six months.
Yes.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
There's a second? Any other questions or comments?
Can you hear me?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no?
No.
No, aye, no. Okay. And my concern is the traffic on Taylor Road, because we saw, we saw what it did on the south side of Taylor and it, and it was, it was pretty extensive and it did impede the traffic on Taylor. So, that, that's my concern.
Yeah, that the safety of the kids is very important.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay, so, motion fails three to two. And next item.
So this is a conditional use permit for a, for a snack shop, snack shop. It already had a life of the use, but they changed the name of the business, and so that's why it's coming back. But we don't have no problems with the neighbors, they do sell alcoholic beverages to go, but But we don't have no problems with the neighbors, they do sell alcoholic beverages to go, but it's mostly a snack shop, uh, fits very nicely with the ne-, with the neighborhood. Um, since we haven't had any problems, we're recommending a life of the use, um, it's just a name, a business name change.
Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this request? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Is there anyone online?
No.
No, is there, are there any questions, comments, or a motion? It's not gonna be squinkless anymore.
Just settle on the name, please, settle, yeah, settle on that, no more, no more name changes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, ma'am.
Second.
Here's a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit as requested at three thousand nine North Inspiration, and that would be ordinance number fifty-six fifty-one. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries unanimously. Next item.
It's a conditio-, conditional use permit for an event center, uh, named Florence Events, it's on Conway, uh, just north of Solar Drive, it's in a commercial plaza. It's a small event center, no alcohol sales, uh, plenty of parking. And there, there you have the list of, we're recommending for two years, no one spoke in opposition, PNC recommended approval unanimously.
Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this request? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Is there anyone online?
No.
Or any questions or a motion?
I'm more to approve, second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit as requested at twenty-seven twenty-two North Conway Avenue, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries unanimously, and that's ordinance number fifty-six fifty-two. Next item.
Lotus and more.
So if you remember, back in, in April twenty-eighth, we, we adopted an ordinance to place a limit, a distance limitations on mobile food units. So this is our, our first, uh, test to that ordinance, the application for this came in, I think, five days after the ordinance was adopted, so staff is recommending denial, because it doesn't meet the, the new distance regulations. Is, they're proposing it at the, at the Baptist Church, at the corner of Griffin and Conway. And so if you remember the maps with the circles, uh, it's right in the middle of, of, of the areas where we're not allowing new mobile food units.
So there's already four existing ones there?
Yeah, there's, there's one within one thousand feet.
One, two, three, four.
Yeah, one, there's one within one thousand feet, uh, so we recommend a denial based, it doesn't meet our new ordinance regulations, and PNC also recommended denial.
Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this request? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition?
Yes, ma'am, I'm here.
Is there anyone online, you said?
Yes, yes, I'm here, can you hear me?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yes, uh, this is Ricardo Martinez, I see a lot of familiar faces on the panel, how are y'all doing?
Doing well, thank you.
Good, good, okay, so, the reason for denial last time was because of the location, I, I've since updated it to move it to south of the parking lot, right next to, you know where the basketball court is at? So at first, we had, uh, uh, put it close to right off of four ninety-five, which I saw that, you know, it was, uh, kinda dangerous because of the kids running back and forth or whatnot. So I've since moved it, and the pastor already agreed, we're gonna put it on, on the basketball court way south of the parking lot area. And it's just gonna, we're just gonna be operating two days a week, um, Wednesdays and Sundays, and this is really to help out the church, I'm gonna be donating every month, we're just gonna be selling a lot of this. And it's, it's simple, it's not gonna be nothing complicated, we don't need no grease trap or nothing like that.
Okay, um, have you discussed the, the, the new location with our staff?
Yes, ma'am, I've emailed it, I emailed it to, I think it's there in one of the files, it's right there, I think it's right there, I'm, I'm looking at it right here online.
He emailed that to us today.
Today?
Yes.
I emailed it to Elisa, and I CC'd Mr. Cervantes.
Yeah, and that's what's shown in the, in the PowerPoint right now, you proposed a new location, but you're still within one thousand, within a mile of an existing, so you're still in violation of the ordinance.
Yes, I, yeah, I understand, but I'm not on Conway, 'cause I don't want it to be a nice store, and I, I think that's what they said that last time, they don't want it, you know, they don't want nothing on Conway, they don't, they don't want it to look like Three Mile Line or every other block. So this is hidden behind the church off of four ninety-five, and it's a small little food truck, we wanna be selling a lot of this, not, not really a nice one.
Okay.
And like I said, this is to help out, uh, Pastor Mora. I mean, we're gonna be donating every month to him, he really wants this approved, he was willing to go with me last time, I wasn't able to attend. Our brother went on my behalf, 'cause it's, it's mine and his partnership, uh, he's up in Adeline working, so I'm just like, you know what, I'll just do this, and hopefully you can approve of it, like I said, it's, it's just, uh. We've moved it to the blacktop, Mr. Mora approved of it, and so like I said, we're just gonna be selling a lot of this twice a week, which is, I believe, when they're operating, uh, Wednesdays, I believe it's twelve to three, and Sundays, ten to three.
So, I have a question, ma'am.
Yes.
Would that be a different conditional use permit if it's just gonna be for the church, or they have to?
No, it's still a, it's still a mobile food unit that requires a conditional use permit, and it does not meet our new distance regulations. So he, in my opinion, he just needs to find another location that meets our distance, our new distance regulations.
Okay, any, any other discussions or questions for staff?
I have another question for Mr. Cervantes.
Yes.
Um, in the future, Mr. Cervantes, whenever somebody comes in and applies, if, uh, will they, will the applicant be told automatically you don't meet, and so we're not gonna take their application or anything?
Well.
We're probably not gonna hear it?
So, this applicant, this applicant was told
Okay.
That it was in violation of the ordinance, of New Orleans, so they were fully aware before they paid the two fifty. Now, I cannot deny an, an application, because you have to give a due process, right? So if somebody wants to try and, and, we have to give them due process, but, uh, they, these applicants were told that we would, staff would be recommending denial, and that it was very unlikely it would be approved. So they were fully aware before they paid the, the two hundred and fifty dollars.
Now, is there any way that in this meeting, I guess it's a legal question, is there any way that in this meeting, we can ask the applicant to look for another area that meets, and then not lose that permit? And if he finds somewhere else, and then we can hear it again?
Yeah, well, I mean.
I wouldn't like for him to pay another two fifty.
What I can do is I can check with the city manager, he will be willing, willing to waive the two fifty fee.
Okay, well, we could do that, or we could table the, we could also table the item, and then he could come in with a different location.
Well, we will have to, uh, start the process over with public hearings.
Okay.
So I, my, my recommendation is to, to deny this, give him a chance to find a new location that meets our new ordinance. And then, and then when they find a location, I'll check with Mr. Pennes to waive the fee.
You're right.
And then, uh, hopefully.
Because we have to notify the people within the certain radius, that's right, okay.
Their recommendation.
Yes, okay.
Okay, mayor, I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, go with the recommendations of our planning and zoning and our new ordinance. Um, I know it, they're hard decisions that we have to make, but sometimes we create ordinances for reasons, and so, um, I move for denial.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to deny the, uh, application or the conditional use permit for this location. Um, all in favor say aye to deny the conditional use permit?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, that is a denial, and it's a five-zero. So Mr. Martinez, please, uh, know that, that, uh, if you'll just look for another location that, that meets the, the distance requirement, uh, we. And we will, um, uh, waive the two hundred and fifty dollar, um.
I, if that, if I can get a copy of the map that he showed where all the current, uh, locations are at, I don't, you know what I mean? I don't have.
Yes.
Destimating.
Yes, absolutely, yeah, he'll, uh, Mr. Cervantes is saying he'll get it to you in the morning.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Dale.
Okay, next item, item number twenty-four.
So this is a, a conditional use permit for a portable building along the Expressway, just west of Stewart. The name of the business, A M P M Roadside and Recovery LLC, they got a, a CUP for three years, three years ago. Uh, but unfortunately, the, the owner does not let the applicant build a, a building, right? So, and so, the applicant is asking for one year, and within one year, he's gonna relocate his business. Because the, the property owner is not being cooperative, and is not letting the applicant build a, uh, a building with a foundation.
Okay.
And he did do some additional landscaping, so this is landscaping when I went there, and then he did some additional landscaping to help the situation.
Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, yes, my name is Keith Mora, I'm the owner of the business that's, uh, asking for one more year. I've explained to Mr. Cervantes and his department, I was here three years ago, the three years I was trying so hard to get our landlord, property owner, to build me, I don't ask for much, a small building, just so I could have an office. It's been hard, um, I told her I'm willing to build one out of pocket, I just need to be reimbursed, still got pushback. My, I'm on the last year of my, uh, contract, I did explain to him, I just need a year to finish my contract, and I'll be moving my office if I don't have any more luck. I provide services to the city of Mission, uh, we're a great partnership with the fire department and the police department, we do our best. When we're called to be at a meeting, whether it's here, their department, another department, we always show up. I know this is a tough spot, I completely understand the city's position on the units, they don't want them there anymore, I completely agree with you, that's why I've been trying so hard to get a building myself. I've offered to build one, but it's also hard whenever the landlord tells you, no, you cannot build on my property.
Yeah.
So the effort is there, I'm just not having any luck. I, I'll continue to try for the remainder of the year, 'cause we've already entered our last year, and see if I have any luck, but I don't, they did, uh, recommend that I would be the last one to be able to use that trailer. So even if I leave, they, she will still not be able to use that trailer, which I completely agree with you, I'm not in a position to that, 'cause I don't even wanna be in the trailer myself, but
Okay.
I have to use what is given to me, you know? And for us, it's a prime location, we're right off the Expressway, we're less than a mile from the police department, and we just like being so central. I, we give everything to the city of Mission, I know it's, nothing y'all wanna hear, uh, 'cause I know it has to be, do different with the permits, but we give back to the community, we do Thanksgiving drives, Christmas toy drives, we try to give back as much as we can. We're not just one of the companies that's part of the city just to, me, 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 no, 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 we try to give back as much as we can, and I've explained to him, even the little landscaping that we did, that was a pushback, and those are just flowers that we were able to buy from Home Depot. You know, and that's why I've explained to him when he went by, the remainder, or the whole board of planning and zoning, that it's been a process. And I, I would've known it was gonna be this hard to get a building, I would've never moved in there and signed the lease that we did. But it happens, people can change their minds, so I'm hoping within this next year, I'm hoping we can get a building, 'cause I don't wanna move, but if it comes to it, I'll relocate my office to one of the plazas that's here in the area and go from there, that's not a problem. But I just asked for the year just to finish my contract, that's all I'm asking for.
Okay.
Yes, thank you for your time, it's really appreciated.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, um, if you have any questions, I'm also.
Okay, does anyone have any questions?
I would just recommend that you get all that documentation of our new ordinances and rules, so that you can give to the property owner.
Yes, 'cause then we did the, the three-year one, we did pass that along to her too, but.
Yeah.
It's hard for me.
Yes, we get it.
And that's like I said, we tried even offering to pay for it out of our pocket, and just to get reimbursed for it, and it's still
No.
Giving to the old children.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Is there anyone online, you said? No, okay. All right, is there a motion?
I'm more to approve, I'm, I'm too crazy about the landscaping, but since they aren't gonna be there for one year.
Second. He tried.
Okay. Uh, there is a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit for one additional year. Um, and I think the message that we wanna send to this, um, landlord is that this would be the, pretty much the, the last conditional use permit that, that we're, that we'll approve. Uh, 'cause I know we've been seeing these year after year after year, even company after company, you're not the first one that comes this way, so, uh.
More portable buildings in that location.
Right, right, okay, so all in favor to, uh, approve the one-year extension? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed say no, motion carries unanimously, and that's ordinance number fifty-six fifty-three? Yes, okay, next item.
It's a conditional use permit for a restaurant in a neighborhood commercial zoning, it's a Le Petit Pastries, really nice and quaint small restaurant, no problems with the neighbors. So we're recommending a life of the use contingent, contingent to additional landscaping.
I've seen that, I need to go try it.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this request? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Is there anyone online? Any questions, discussion?
I'm more to approve, I'm opening an office next door, so.
Second.
You are. Okay, so there's a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit at eighteen twenty-one North Sherry Road, and this is for life of use, and this would be ordinance number fifty-six fifty-four, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion, motion carries unanimously, next item.
It's a renewal of a conditional use permit and an amendment to the conditional use permit to allow late hours, uh, alcohol sales. This is a really nice, uh, Italian restaurant on Griffin Parkway, beautiful, beautiful place. Uh, no problems with the neighbors, uh, where staff is recommending for two years, uh, planning and zoning commission recommended the same thing.
Make a motion to approve?
Second, a public, no public hearing.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, um, I, I do have a question, I, I know that it, it just says late hours, so, but what, what are the?
Till two o'clock in the morning.
Till two o'clock in the morning?
Requesting two, two o'clock.
Okay. Okay.
She made a motion.
No, but it's public hearing. Okay. Yeah, I jumped, okay. So is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this request? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Is there anyone online?
No.
Okay.
Okay, yes.
And, and please do include the, the, the actual hour, not just late hours, in your motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, um.
The renewal.
The renewal of the Macino Pizza and Pasta, and with the hours of eight AM to two AM.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the extended hours at twenty-one hundred East Griffin Parkway, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries unanimously, five-zero. Okay. Is that it for public hearing? Yes, it is, okay.
I'll make a motion to go into executive.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to go into executive session, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries unanimously. All opposed, say no, motion carries unanimously. Okay, uh, there's a motion, there's a second, there's a lot in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, say no, motion carries unanimously, uh, there are, there is no, uh, no, uh.
Action.
No action items in executive session, so is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm more to adjourn.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, motion carries unanimously, well, meeting is adjourned at six twenty-seven.